Good evening, welcome to the Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen meeting of the Albion City Council. I ask if you have any electronic devices to put them on silent at this time. This meeting is called to order, and I would ask that we observe a moment of silence. Thank you, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes, Reed, Brown, Lawler, Spicer, French, and Mayor Brown.
Here. Are there any councilmembers' comments this evening? Councilman Reed.
Mayor Brown, and to the council, I would like to take my presentation of Holland Park on Juneteenth offer this week and do it at the next board meeting so that we can give our distinguished guest the time.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments from council this evening? Councilmember French.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say thanks to Public Safety and Public Services who helped make commencement at Albion College last weekend as successful as it always is. It was seamless, they helped direct traffic around construction in the downtown, heard from families, parents especially, who were helped by our Public Safety Officers who were on duty that day, so thanks again. And we graduated a whole bunch of people, and we've got some good new students coming in in the fall. Thank you, Mayor.
And I'd also like to acknowledge the NAACP and Kids at Hope. There was a joint graduation celebration for Albion, graduating Albion seniors from all the various districts around town, and that was a really great event, and it's probably still going on, but wanted to thank them for sponsoring that as well.
Okay, seeing no other comments, we'll move forward with the agenda. For presentations, item A, proclamation, Tom Gladney and Chief Kip, if you come forward.
There's several former Albion Police Officers here in attendance. I don't know if I could point them all out or tell you who they were, but many of them served with Tom Gladney back in the late sixties and early seventies. Many of them were Albion College students who came to work at Albion Public, or Albion Police Department during that time. And Tom was a mentor to them and a leader to them, as a sergeant at the time and later on to be a lieutenant. I got the pleasure to know Tom as Assistant Director of Campus Safety at Albion College when I worked there, because he became Assistant Director with me and was a mentor for me as well. So it meant a lot to me to have these guys ask me to do something for Tom and to do this for him. And so what we want to do, Tom, is make you honorary Chief of Police for the city of Albion. I think he deserved that. I have to apologize because I got the date wrong on here, but it says, "For your unwavering support and guidance that helped in leading many young officers on the path to success, and in recognition of your service, loyalty, leadership, and friendship, the city of Albion hereby honors you with much appreciation and gratitude by bestowing upon you the title of Honorary Police Chief."
Thank you.
And if I plug it in... I found the remote in my pocket. I believe there's a former officer that would like to come up and say a couple words, or a couple former officers, so if you'd like to come up and speak, feel free.
I would like to just say one thing. To go to work for the city of Albion back in the days, then wake up one evening, to go to work one evening, and find five students from Albion College, and the president at that time asked me to take care of them. And they're here now, as police officers, judges, lawyers, and to realize that they came by this evening to see me or this weekend, and it's been a joy to have them around. So thank you, city of Albion.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Paul Keller. I am a lawyer in Chicago. I grew up in Albion. I graduated from Washington Gardner High School and then went on to Albion College. When I was nineteen, I went to work for the city of Albion in the Department of Public Works, driving a dump truck and patching streets. Later, about nineteen sixty-six, I think, when the volunteer Albion Area Ambulance Service was established, I was one of the first volunteers, much to my horror. And then later, in sixty-seven, I became an Albion Police Officer. And there was no training at all, a police officer in this area at that time, it was on-the-job training. I'd never handled, touched a handgun before I joined the police department. But we had what today we would call a field training officer in Tom Gladney. He was a mentor to me and to all of the other college students who, for one reason or another, joined the Albion Police Department. There were six or eight or ten of us at that time, and we had a wonderful time together, and it was largely due to Tom. When I joined the department, I thought I knew the city of Albion, because I lived here for fifteen years or so at that point. I quickly discovered that there was a whole lot about the city of Albion that I didn't know very much about. And Tom showed me the ropes and showed me how to deal with people. I learned from watching him how to deal with people. He was always there whenever there was any trouble and we needed backup, and I am very pleased to see the city honor him in this way tonight. He really deserves it. He's one of the bravest men I know, because of all he's been through. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and city manager and city council, I want to thank you for recognizing my good friend, Tom Gladney. And we served on the Albion Police Department together, and if anybody deserves recognition for serving on the Albion Police Department, Tom Gladney does. And I am so happy for him, and he and I are like brothers, we've known each other since I first came to Albion. And I came here on June sixth, nineteen sixty-six, as a police officer and worked for about almost eight years before going to work at the school system. And when I was with the school system, I continued to work with Tom. And you have to understand that we fought some wars together back in those days, didn't we, Tom? And there were some times back in, it was not fun here in Albion. But this man was a leader, a distinguished officer, highly respected by his men, and I can't think of anyone more deserving, and I'm so happy for you, and all I can say is God bless you and your wife, who's been at your side, she's been through some stuff with you. So, thank you once again, city council and Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I know you folks have an agenda, so we need to get going, but I'm Conrad Cent. I served on the police force from sixty-eight until seventy-three. I'm also a college grad here. I want to echo everything that has been said here. I want to say too that many times a character of a person can be demonstrated by the small things that he does. And I want to tell you a story about a small thing that Tom did, which I think demonstrates his character. He and I were riding together in a, on the day shift. I was relatively new on the department, he'd been on the department a couple of years. And we thought we spied a no parking zone on Maple Street around the Corning Plant. So we grabbed our equipment and we got out of the police car and we proceeded to write parking citations in what we thought was a no parking zone. And we were feeling real proud of ourselves, we were taking care of these folks that were parking improperly. And we were walking along the street, we would skip one car, he would do one car, I'd go ahead and do the next one. And all of a sudden, we, after about ten or twelve tickets, we walked up on a sign that we'd not properly read. It said, "No Parking Midnight to Six," and this was about noon. So we looked at each other, and Tom was a senior officer, and he said, "Well, we're gonna have to void all these." And that wasn't an easy thing to do. We had to come back and describe to the sergeant what it is we'd done or failed to do. And there's paperwork involved and all that kind of thing. But Tom never hesitated. He said, "We've just gotta pull these and admit our error and go about our business." And I've always thought of that story when I think of Tom Gladney, how easy it would have been just to walk away, and most of those folks probably would have paid their citation and so on and so forth, they would have been entirely wrong. Tom knew it, and he stood up for what was right. That, I think, is an ample demonstration of his good character. The other thing that he needs to be recognized for, and Barbara, as Walt was saying, those were fraught times in this town. Fraught times. I remember the Martin Luther King assassination and the things that happened in Albion at that time. We worked twelve-hour shifts in four-man cars, and there were some terrible things that happened in this town. Tom and his wife were instrumental shortly after that, or perhaps, I'm not certain, about that time, in organizing or assisting to organize a group called the Melting Pot, which was a social group of all races. And people would get together in each other's homes and get to know each other. And it was as a result of that, that was one of the major reasons that Albion won a very prestigious national award shortly thereafter. And I have always respected Tom and his wife Barbara for their role in that. So I echo again everything everyone has said here and wanted to add a few comments to it as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna speak from over here so I can see everybody. I'm not a police officer, I'm seventy-five years old and I didn't have one back then. But I did come, I was back then, but I did come from Boston today to pay tribute, and I'm so happy to be here, to pay tribute to our very dear friends, Tom Gladney. When I say "our" friends, my husband Paul and I have been friends with Tom for fifty years. Sandy Kimindel is my name. And I'd like to say that, I'm gonna read this from my husband, I know you have everybody, he'll ask me if I read it. "I'm sorry I can't be there with you today, my friend. It seems like yesterday, though we've been friends, Tom, for almost fifty years. You changed my life with the example you set, then and now. I am the better man for it. Thank you. When we first met Barbara, Gladney, and Tom, we learned very important lessons, because I'm gonna try not to crack it. We learned that individually, we could make a difference, and collectively, collectively, when I say collectively, with the town government, with the police, with the college, with the schools, with Corny Glasswitz and all the businesses, with religious, all peoples, all religious, ethnic backgrounds and races, with labor and management, that collectively we could contribute to make an all-American city. Tom Gladney was a police officer at that time, and he used his quiet strength to guide the department toward innovation to support the outcome. It was a critical piece of what had happened in Albion. Tom was not a political man. He didn't use political will, he used goodwill. And my hope for you tonight, Tom, is to put your humility aside and feel your success tonight. This is not a day for you to be humble. It's a day to acknowledge all of us who respect you and love you so very much. You deserve it, Tom. You deserve it."
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city manager, councilman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Distinguished guests, friends. My name is John, the last name is Cease, like ceasefire. When they yelled that on the range the first time and I cranked around off, they now had changed the order of things to say, "Stop firing," rather than ceasefire. So my name is spelled just exactly like it sounds. There's an officer that I followed on the department about a year behind him, who couldn't be here tonight, and he's heartsick about it. And he's in Connecticut with his wife. It was an unavoidable situation. He was a very good friend of Tom and Barbara, and a very good friend of mine, an Albion College student and Albion College graduate. His name was Ed Edwerson, and he wrote this letter for Tom for me to read tonight and have it acknowledged by the city council. Dear Tom, although Ginny and I are in Connecticut grandparenting, I ask John Cease to give this letter to you on our behalf. The honor bestowed upon you by the city of Albion was one of our profession and career-long leadership. During my forty-year career in law enforcement, I never faced a tougher policing environment than Albion between nineteen sixty-five and nineteen seventy-five. Our country was in a state of constant upheaval from protesters of Vietnam War, civil unrest, labor strike, Battle Creek Police Ride of nineteen seventy. Our city was divided on many fronts, crime challenges were numerous on every shift, and resources to confront these law enforcement challenges were scarce. I vividly remember working twelve-hour shifts six days a week due to hiring shortfalls. You couldn't hire a cop in nineteen seventy in this town. It is with this difficult time that leaders like yourself, Tom Gladney, were tasked with helping to train and retain, keep, police rookies. The Albion Police Department assignment during this period was not easy on anyone. You, however, always brought your A-game to every shift. You were a constant recipient of determination and professionalism. You brought a constant calm demeanor to critical situations we faced, and mentorists by your devotion to the police profession. I remember talking to you often about how communities come together and rise above the petty racism that divided us. Our conversations and subsequent socialization between our spouses, Barbara Gladney, led to a wonderful and positive idea. We knew we couldn't save the world, but what if we helped provide a medium that would allow our diverse citizenry to come together and get to truly know each other and that we are all really alike? The Melting Pot was born, provided an opportunity for nearly two hundred couples to share food, entertainment, and fellowship. It earned the city of Albion the All-American City Award in nineteen seventy-four. That's pretty prestigious, if you haven't thought about that as a city. You and Barbara made that happen. It was the most special time for Ginny and I to live and work there, and we're proud to be members of your group of people when we moved in. I feel honored and privileged to have served almost nine years with you in Albion. We are honored still to share a special relationship with you and Barbara. May God bless you and your family always. Congratulations to both of you for lives well-lived and the service above self to your police department and your community. That's from Mr. Ed Edwerson. I'm caught in an unusual vortex here. I came here in nineteen sixty-five as a student at Albion College from rural Appalachia. Now, for those of you that are not familiar with what rural Appalachia is, it means I'd never seen a black person until I was probably seventeen years old. Saw it on TV, we had black and white TVs, so back then, everybody looked pretty much the same. So my first experience was with the Albion Ambulance Association, which Paul referenced earlier. I, as a college freshman, joined and helped and thought it was a good thing to do. I was raised in a new oil patch. I came from that part of Pennsylvania that produces Pennsylvanian crude oil. I worked in a new oil patch from the time I was twelve years old and thought I knew a lot about life. Little did I know what would happen when I was thrown into this racial vortex in Vietnam War situation in the mid-sixties. My words may not be as pretty and as kind as what the other people have said here tonight, but I've always been the one to just say how I felt. My first experience with black people was not good. I wanted to work for the Albion Police Department. After I had my nose and face bashed in a couple of times at Robinson's Tavern up on the north side of town, I had this feeling about black people that wasn't positive, and I didn't even know. They accused my family and myself of being former slave owners, which they never were. My great-great-great uncle Ed got a Congressional Medal of Honor from President Lincoln for serving in the Union Army, and I was confused by all of this. I came to work at the police department because I needed a job. I needed to make enough money to get through college. I tried a couple of other places, we had Brooks Frounder, we had the Albion Malleable Iron, we had Gray, we had Albion Steel Products. You could work anywhere in this city in nineteen sixty-five, nineteen sixty-six. I sampled a couple of them, and they were horrible, and one day I looked out the window and there went by a police car, and I said to Conrad, my roommate, I said, "You know, that wouldn't be a bad job. Now Conrad's worked in some pretty lousy jobs in this town. He's off an Iowa farm, corn farm, and he's worked some pretty nasty jobs in this town to get himself through college." And we came down and signed up with the Albion Police Department. There were about six or seven of us, one is dead, the rest of us are alive. The most successful might be John Fazigus, he runs a bar in the Upper Michigan Peninsula. I said, "John really got it right. He went to the Upper Peninsula and ran a bar." But the rest of us went on to become police chiefs, lawyers, judges, administrative court judges, and out of that five or six, with the exception of John, who's probably happier than the rest of us, were highly successful in our own careers. I spent thirty-five years in law enforcement. I was a police chief in, at Western Michigan University, Director of Public Safety in Kalamazoo after I left here, was a police chief in Morgantown, West Virginia, where I earned a PhD in politics on how policing worked. Went on to Virginia, became the first police chief in Roanoke County in a county police department, and went through the unusual process of taking the authority and the job away from the local county sheriff. That was an emasculation of a sheriff, it was an interesting situation to go through. And finished my career in Wilmington, North Carolina, when I arrived in nineteen ninety-seven, and was told in nineteen ninety-eight, the city was gonna commemorate the entire year the riots of eighteen ninety-eight in Wilmington, in which numerous blacks were massacred and decapitated, and it was a horrible, horrible time in the South. And I said, "What a way to start a career in a new police department." If it hadn't been for Tom, and this is what this is really all about, none of us, I don't think, would have been successful in what we dealt with. I've dealt with race in every police department I was a chief in. None of them was as bad as Albion. I've never been as physically beat up, abused, knocked around. I paid my dues in this city, and I paid them the hard way. I've had three facial reconstructions ten years after I left this department. I've had a number of problems, and I don't feel bad about it, but if it hadn't been for Tom and Barbara, because they were involved in this city coming together, I wanted to work on a midnight shift and just got masked, you know? There's a difference in what the world was that they were in and the world I was in. And then suddenly, there was this recognition and realization, Tom Gladney, standing right here, and Barbara would take me aside and say, "John, you haven't seen the whole picture. There's more to this than what meets the eye." I remember standing in the hallways of Washington Gardner up here, with people fighting, kids fighting, monitors like Sandra, and Barbara standing around trying to keep the peace. Walton Nichols was a school resource officer. We only had two black police officers in this entire city, and we had a much larger police department than unfortunately you have today. And then to that man sitting right there, and that woman sitting right there, this might have been a much different community, because we could have gone the way that a lot of other communities went, and they kept the lid on it. Now, they had help, but I'll tell you, Five Nineteen West Center Street was known by everybody as the hub, because that was the place you could go that you were having a problem, racial, social, economic. They took people in off the street, they took people in from every race and color you could believe, and made human beings out of the rest of us who had a chip on our shoulder because we literally didn't understand there was a difference between white people and black people, because I'd never seen any. So it's a really emotional time for me. I haven't been back here in forty years. I saw Conrad Cent tonight, first time I've seen him in forty years, he was my college roommate for years, all around the police departments. It's a very emotional thing, there's, I've got some demons in this city that I came to get rid of, and went and looked at two of them today, I'm gonna go look at a couple of them tomorrow. And I want to unload those demons and get rid of, things I did that I'm not proud of, things that I had done to me that I was unhappy about, and come to peace with the world. And I think it's wonderful to sit here and look at a black mayor, black council members, a police chief, look at the audience in here, it's mixed, there's men, there's women, there's blacks and whites. You and the city deserve credit, and Tom Gladney right there and his wife Barbara deserve a huge amount of credit. And if I drive around here next year or two years when I come back again, and I don't see an All-American City sign somewhere posted at the entrance to this city, I'm gonna be upset, because there are people in this room that really worked to get that designation in nineteen seventy-four. I thank you for your time, I thank you for what you did in growing me as a person, as a city. I'd like to thank Albion College for doing the same, but that was a tough go too, I wasn't the best student or person, but I did survive it, and I am a better person for it. Thank you, thank you, thank you for the honor that you bestowed on a person and his wife that really deserved. that really deserved.
I am eternally grateful to be here as Barbara Gladney. I am the person they could return to as the spouse of the other person. This was forty years ago. I cannot believe that someone was paying tribute to something that happened that I took for granted. Every one of them, Conrad, everyone, they were at our home, they cooked there, they ate there, they were part of my family, because I believe that's what police departments should be. I was like a dad, and we welcomed them. I want to tell you something, it's a tribute paid for Tom, but you've got the same thing here. When I look at your chief, this is today, I've had to call him, I've had to call the police department myself. They have responded. I looked in the backyard, I had a little girl I was keeping there, who was sitting in the sling, went to look for my child that I was keeping for foster care. The chief's sitting out there in the backyard, swinging and talking to her. Said, "I have her, Barb, she's all right." I've had to call, they responded nice. We might all have a problem, you don't know when you're gonna have to call the police department. Just hope and pray that you've got some officers there that understand the concept that should be. Still today, right here in Albion, there is no difference. We're all fighting for the same goal. Together we stand, we can persevere. It's not All-American City from yesterday, it's for today, tomorrow, and the next day. Whichever you decide to do, do it with that in mind. I am so happy tonight, I can't tell you. I think not, because I want to tell our city manager, your standing is in my goal. We sat on my porch fifty years ago. There were no women, African-American women, that they thought had minds like hers, have a good mind, and I'm so happy to say congratulations. You're there, a mayor. Yes, we don't have to fight anymore and say, "You can think." People know now we have minds. I look at the council, it's a blessing. Look at it tonight, as we can do anything but fail. Thank you for recognizing, Tom, we've had our own problems, the Lord is still in charge. We battled some health issues, we battled home issues, but he's still in charge, and I thank you for recognizing him. My son's wife is having major surgery tomorrow, he just came in. You'll on one second, and my super grandson, one second, we promise we'll sit down and be good. My best friend, Sandra Penfins, left here. They now own their home in Martha's Vineyard. The Lord has really blessed them. Anytime you can get into one of those planes and they're ready and they can just take you anywhere, and then come and get people like us and take us with them, you know, it's a blessing. She didn't forget, she remembered. So, when you all make it, don't forget to look back and get somebody that you might have left behind. That might be a helping hand. I love you all, Albion. It's been a long time coming back. I've been out of the loop for so long, I didn't even know how to come to see y'all. Thank the Lord for everything. God bless you.
Between agenda items, I want to acknowledge the, the manager. Dr. Mitchell just reminded me that this year, the department is, is celebrating its one-hundredth anniversary of the Albion Public Police Department, so. Thank you, Mr. Gladney, and I, I think your contribution to the community is really evident tonight, so, uh, God bless you. Yeah.
All I gotta say is, uh, thank you all for recognizing my dad, who works so hard. To be word, yeah. Thank you. I just said, "Thank you."
Uh, we will move forward to item B, uh, under Presentations, Proclamation Honoring Richard Decker, and I'll have you kick it on. Oh, well, yeah, we'll do it that way.
Didn't actually plan it this way tonight. It just kinda fell into place that we're honoring a former officer retiring, and we have another officer retiring tonight, and we actually have a third officer who is getting sworn in tonight, so. Richard, come on forward. So, just wanted to acknowledge, um, Mr. Decker's service to the city. So, the City of Albion has a certificate of appreciation awarded to PSO, Richard Decker, in recognition of exemplifying outstanding public service as a member of the Albion Public Safety Department for twenty-eight years. Officer Decker received three lifesaving awards, an award for fraud investigation, and was involved in the Shop With A Cop program during his tenure as an Albion Public Safety officer. The city expresses its appreciation for your years of service, and we extend our best wishes on your retirement. So, presented on behalf of the Albion and Department of Public Safety, we want to congratulate you and thank you for your service for twenty-eight years.
I was always proud of my service to the Albion Department of Public Safety and to the City of Albion. I'm proud of the people I worked with, I'm proud of the group of officers we have now, and in my heart, I will always be a member of the Albion Department of Public Safety. Thank you all, and thank you all.
This is, uh, item C, Oath of Office, Public Safety Officer Bill Lazarus.
Now, um, I'm pleased to introduce to you, uh, Officer Billy Lazarus. Uh, he just completed the police academy, uh, last Friday, graduated, and, uh, began his field training yesterday, and, uh, so he's being sworn in today, and...
I, William Lazarus.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowling swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will.
I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
To search the duties.
Search the duties.
Of Albion Public Safety Officer. So, help me now.
His wife's gonna pin his badge on for him. Hopefully.
Many of you probably know Billy, uh, he was born and raised here in Albion. He lives over in Marshall now, but, uh, his father, whose father is back, I'm sure, Tim Leonardson, by Director of Public Services, so.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys. Should we get an interview?
We will move forward now to item D, under Presentations, Proclamation Honoring National Poppy Day. Uh, who's the...
If you could state your name for the record.
My name is Harry Druck. I'm the commander of 065 of American Legion in Michigan. City of Albion, National Poppy Day, May 26th, 2017. Whereas expressing support for the designation of May 26th, to be May 26th, 2017, is National Poppy Day in Albion, Michigan, and recognizing the importance of honoring those that have worn our nation's uniforms, and whereas poppies are worn and displayed as a symbolic tribute to our fallen and the future of living veterans and service members, and whereas at the end of World War I, the American Legion adopted the poppy as a symbol of freedom and the blood sacrificed by the troops in wartime, and whereas the use of the poppy symbol comes from the home in Flanders Field, which moving again, in Flanders Field, the poppies blow between the crosses, row on row. Referring to the poppies that sprang up in the Charnburg, a battle close across Belgium, France was sold to die fighting, whereas the American Legion family, a young, long utilized the red poppy as a fisher flower, symbolized the bloodshed by those who have served in our nation's military, and fitting that as the American Legion and American Legion Auxiliary approached their one-hundredth anniversaries, they expand the meaning and symbolism of the poppy, mirroring the manner in which the poppies is symbolically showcased in England and Canada, uh, in celebratory fashion on the, on their remembrance day, also known as Armistice Day and Poppy Day. And whereas wearing a poppy will unite citizens from across the country who decide to show their patriotism, whereas the May 26th, 2017, would be an appropriate date to designate as National Poppy Day, therefore, be resolved by Eric Brown, Mayor, along with Albion City Council, support the designation of May 26th, 2017, as National Poppy Day, and encourage all citizens, residents, and visitors in Albion to join observing this day to honor those, uh, service members who have died in the name of liberty, freedom, and democracy, while also showing their support for living veteran, service members, and their families. Thank you.
It's just a quick one. Briefly, the American Legion will be distributing poppies on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday this week. The money's from, we give the poppies. We accept donations that are already from, uh, this cause, all loaned to, uh, the aid of veterans in need. The money that is raised stays in a mere area, uh, and it is distributed by your local folks, any veteran who shows need, be it, uh, medical, be it utilities. We, the American Legion, are a service organization, not a club, and our goal is to see the veterans receive the help. Thank you so much.
He will proceed to, uh, public hearing, uh, 2017 on sidewalk exemptions, um, Request Approval Resolution, 2017 dash 21, 2017 sidewalk exemption approval. I will open. Yeah, we've changed the...
Oh, it's a public hearing.
Yeah. Sorry. I'm gonna open it when they... Everybody's leaving. Good evening. Okay, people are clearing out. Yeah, I'm trying to... Can you get the door? Okay, we will proceed. Um, I'll open the public hearing now for, uh, the sidewalk exemptions. If there are any, uh, residents who have any comments regarding, uh, the exemption from sidewalk assessment, if you please come forward, state your name, um, and your address. How are you?
My name is Chriskeen Fepson, I live on High Street.
Okay.
Definitely a place without speaking of... Without a sidewalk. I don't mind paying the extra fifty, but I would like to pay it as a donation.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't think...
Is it working?
Is...
I'm just asking, you know, that option maybe of those that do pay, would be taxes, and you don't have a sidewalk? The exemption?
I, I know that there are, um, definitely projects the city are, that the city is working on.
I know, I've gone to City Hall before, but no one's...
Okay.
Provided me with any information other than coming back, the form's not ready or something, so...
Well, what we can do is, um, after the meeting, we can talk with the, the manager staff and, and see what possibilities there are for doing it. Councilmember French?
So, I'm, I'm trying to understand your request. You're, you're saying you're willing to pay the fifty dollars, but you want to consider it a donation versus a fee?
Right.
So, from a city's perspective, it all goes into the same fund?
Right.
So, are you making a political statement in protest of...
Not necessarily, just, just an awareness of the...
So, so basically, by my understanding, you, you don't have sidewalks?
Pardon me?
You don't have sidewalks?
Oh, no, not...
Okay.
Never had a sidewalk, ever.
Okay.
Ever.
Okay. Okay.
And I brought it up before, but I was told to come back, but it was like, okay, who can we talk to?
Okay. Was that, was that the? We, I apologize, I think we were a little.
It's okay.
Distracted by the.
I just know that the others in the street too were saying the same thing, you know, just, you know. I guess we're probably trying to identify what streets to in Albion don't have sidewalks and are also taxed on it.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, if you consider it a donation, at what point in time would you decide, if you wanted to stop donating and it not be affecting?
Well, it, apparently this occurred in 2008, initially started. I've always paid it, but it was just a discussion that on my account kept saying, you know, look at it. I know it's only my inner 50s, but he says, you know, write it off with other donations that I usually make. I know I've donated before to Albion Public Safety too, you know.
Thank you, Mayor. So, what you're inquiring is you want it to be a write-off for you?
Yes, just a form.
I think, just for the sake of.
I know others have stated this to me, and I said, this is something I could also request.
Okay. That's something that we can, we can probably have.
Well, Mayor, if I could just get a clarification, because it's difficult to hear.
Yeah, yeah, one second. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna ask for a recess for one moment. I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, we're just gonna have one second. Okay, that's great. Okay, so do I have a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Yes.
Councilmember French?
So, City Manager Mitchell, you are about to sit. I missed what you had said, so if you could just.
I just wanted to get some clarification. So, you qualify for the exemption for the sidewalk assessment?
Mm-hmm.
So, you're asking to keep that in place, however, you want to voluntarily donate the $50. I don't think there's anything prohibiting you from doing that.
Okay.
I would defer to our attorney if he has a different perspective.
Well, I think we're talking about two separate things. What we're talking about tonight is individuals seeking an exemption from the assessment. If somebody wants to donate money, that particular amount of money back to the city, I mean, that's a separate thing. I mean, what is being addressed tonight is just simply the exemption.
The exemption.
So, I mean, if you want to explore that with the city, I think you certainly can, but the only issue for right now is whether or not you're seeking an exemption.
And we would even accept a donation of a larger amount. That would go to public health department.
Councilmember French?
Thank you, Mayor. So, if I'm hearing this correctly, I think what I'm hearing is that the citizen wishes to be exempt from our sidewalk assessment because she does not have a sidewalk on her property. She qualifies under the new exemption, which we are going to decide today.
Yeah.
Is she on this list?
Could you restate your name and address, please?
Christina Phipps, P-H-I-P-P-S.
She's not on our list.
Could it be under Kent?
Kent?
Nope.
Was there a dead mark?
There's like four houses on High Street.
Was there like a time? Oh, well. Yeah, if you'd just give me your address, give us.
409 High.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other?
Good afternoon, my name is Clarissa Lewis, and I was here for the.
Your address. Address.
703 Bahala Drive. And we were just, well, I thought it was gonna be a little bit more of us, but I guess not, just to see if we were exempt from the, paying the taxes for 2017 of this year. We don't have the sidewalks, and we were told that we wouldn't have the sidewalks, so we just basically trying to see if we were all exempt from that.
Yeah, you're on the list.
We had received a petition, I think it was late last year, from residents on Bahala, and all of them are listed on the exemption list today.
Okay, and one more question on that, like the ones that we had like last year. We were talking about, we're not trying to receive any money or anything, but we were just wondering, we paid the, for that property taxes last year. What was it, for 10 years? Five years or whatever it was? 10? Okay, we're not asking for money back, but we were just wondering, by us paying it, you know, could they just do something with our streets out there, because the streets are bad out there? So, the money that we have paid out, can we just get the streets, you know, with the money that we done paid out?
The funds that have been, I guess, collected with the assessment are like specifically for sidewalks, but I know that each year we do, you know, we, in each regular year, I know there's some different, there's some changes because of Superior being redone, but typically we designate particular streets each year to be redone, so I think you let us know so we're aware of that, and so I think we're definitely gonna consider that when we, you know, can, can do local, when we do local streets, but, but the funds from the sidewalks are designated to sidewalks, so that's.
I understand those.
Yeah.
As far as this for the side, I'm just understandable.
Just when you finish. No, just go ahead and finish. Go ahead and finish. You're good.
Okay.
I just had a comment, that's all.
Okay, Councilmember French?
So, Mrs. Lewis, you would like us to consider that, your request, that your street be considered for construction or repavement at the next available budget time? Is that correct? Because the streets that are design, have already been identified and designated for this year for repaving, so yours would probably have to be considered for next available time. Is that okay? Is that your request? But you just, that's what you'd like to have, right?
I promise, I'm just saying.
Is that what you got? Okay. Consider it a request.
Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening. I'm Dennis Reed, 1103 Burr Oak, and I'm requesting the exempt.
You're on the list.
I'm on the list. Hey, just wasted a trip. Thank you for your time.
It's always nice to see you.
Are there any other, thank you. Are there any other, are there any other public comments on this public hearing regarding sidewalk exemptions? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for a motion from council to approve those who have applied for exemption.
So moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Is there any discussion from council? Councilmember Brown?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I, my property does not have a sidewalk, so I have requested the exemption for myself. At the advice of Attorney Parkness, I'm asking the council to allow me to abstain from this vote.
Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Will you second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, back to the primary motion. Are there any other council comments or discussion on sidewalk exemptions? Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. In the packet, I received three properties. Are these properties included in this, this vote to be exempt, even though they do have sidewalks?
Can you address the yellow note?
This is the half of the sidewalk.
My, I think this is an issue that came up earlier today, and the manager and the mayor asked my opinion on it. I think my, my position would be that if the properties have a sidewalk, then they would not qualify for the exemption as we drafted the resolution. I think at least one of these properties is a property that happens to be on a corner and has a sidewalk on at least one side, and to date, and I think in the interest of maintaining consistency, we've only exempted those properties that do not have a sidewalk and will not receive a sidewalk under the assessment, so that's, that's my position.
Councilmember Lawler?
So, as we vote tonight, these three properties will not be included in that vote? Is that correct?
That would be my recommendation to the council.
Or do we have to make a motion to remove these three? Except the others?
I would say probably not if they didn't meet the requirement of the original resolution that we had, but I think, you know, going forward, this, this, I think we have maybe one more year on this, and the council's gonna have to really kind of think about how we want to do this going forward, so that'd be a really good time to decide how we want to handle sidewalk improvements, so. I don't think there's a need for a motion to remove them. Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. So, just clarification, noting, property owners who were, had submitted a request for to be exempt from the sidewalk fee, they will be notified, am I correct, that they were, that their request has been rejected or not approved because they do have a sidewalk?
Yes, everyone will be notified. So, Mayor, just to clarify, is the motion that council is considering is the attached list, less the three properties that are highlighted because we have identified that they do in fact have sidewalks, and the addition of Ms. Phipps who appeared before you today?
Yes.
I don't think you guys necessarily need to modify the resolution because the way the resolution is worded is that the exemptions from the city sidewalk assessment that were received prior to or at the public hearing for those properties which meet the criteria. I think just, as long as you, as a council, acknowledge that those three properties don't meet the criteria, you should be okay to vote on this.
Is there any other discussion from council? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Abstain.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Thank you. Public comment. If there's any person wishing to address the city council this evening, we ask that you would limit your comments to three, no more than three minutes, and observe proper decorum. Are there any public comments regarding the agenda, this evening's agenda?
Good evening. Bill Dobbins, 15901 East Michigan Avenue. Just want to make sure that this, this is on the agenda tonight, right? Okay, didn't want to be speaking. So, I'm here to support the vote for the contract with Revitalize and Bruce Johnston. Bruce has been a, a key part of discussions now for about a year regarding these, this property, and we're, you know, I think we've, we've developed some, some very nice team members, going back actually a couple of years with Cheryl coming on board, unfortunately Rosalynn Jones, but Rosalynn passed away, but, but certainly was an important part of moving things along in the community, new mayor, new city council, and Amy DePries, and, and now Bruce is, is just sort of a key part of that, that team that will assist us in the development of the Peabody, but all these people are actively involved in, in other things, and I should include Danielle and, and the work that she's doing to support all this effort, and so I hope the council sees fit to move forward with this contract and this important development in Albion, so thank you.
Are there any other, is there any other public comment regarding this evening's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move forward to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve of the consent calendar?
So moved.
So, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Items for individual discussion, agenda item A, request approval resolution number 2017 dash 22, to authorize the city clerk to sign and submit a grant application to the state to purchase election equipment funded by the, do not know the acronym there? I have a, I don't know what it stands for. Help America Vote in the State of Michigan, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second? Moving seconded.
Mayor and council, what we have before you is a request to authorize the clerk to submit the grant application on behalf of the city of Albion, the Secretary of State to purchase the new voting equipment from Dominion Voting, which has been identified as the equipment for, I guess, a statewide, along with the absentee voter counting board tabulators, if applicable, and accessible voting devices for those individuals with disabilities, and the software. And this will be paid for entirely by, is that entirely, or is there a small match?
No, it's entirely by the state.
Are there any questions, discussion from council? Councilmember Brown?
Yes, just a question, thank you, Mayor. The equipment, the new voting system, is that going to be new at every precinct or every voting location?
All of Michigan.
Oh, everybody. We're applying for grants to do ours, right? Is this the application for a grant? Okay, yeah. So, we're applying for a grant to cover the expense of the new equipment.
They actually have Hava funds left over from the previous.
Administration.
Equipment that they get, that they got, so they've used that, and then the state has kicked in the remainder. They actually came up with three vendors, and so Calhoun County chose Dominion, so everybody in Calhoun County will have the same equipment.
Thank you.
Question, so are they gonna, are they going to be just newer versions of the scan? Is it gonna be like full-fledged electronic? Do you know what the?
It's, the, the tabulator is gonna be pretty much the same tabulator as what we had before.
Okay.
It's smaller and newer, but.
Okay. Are there any other?
Is there going to be any training of people? Is it going to be diff, be to where the people who have to use it, the citizens, will know what to do, or? Yeah, it's gonna be very similar to exactly the way that they do it now, and all of our election inspectors will be trained on the equipment, so they'll be right there to help, you know, with the help and stuff.
Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. I have just one quick question. Being on the, helping out with the election, do I have to abstain from this vote?
I don't. She's a poll.
No, because it's, it's, it's just for replacement equipment, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a financial benefit to you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from council? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Agenda item B, request approval resolution twenty seventeen, number twenty seventeen dash twenty-three, a resolution to approve bid and entry, uh, and entry into agreement with Revitalize, uh, Limited License Corporation LLC for administrative consulting services as a, as a third-party community development block grant, grant administrator. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support, second.
Moved and seconded. All right, discussion.
Mayor and council, this is related to the community development block grant application on behalf of the Peabody Project. And as part of the funding from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, they do allow for some of the funding to cover a grant administrator. In fact, they do, um, require that they be certified under their program. So, we did issue an RFP, um, under their direction and guidance in regards to the specifics of the contract. They're very much involved in oversight. And in response, we did receive two, um, applicants. There was a review committee consisting of myself, Amy DePries, the, um, CEO from the Albion Economic Development Corporation, and Mike Timque, um, representing the Downtown Development Authority. And we had reached consensus relative to our recommendation, and that is that Revitalize, we awarded the, um, RFP and contract relative to this project. Their call came in at an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. And that is, um, fully reimbursable through the MEDC, so there aren't any costs attributable to the city itself.
Any discussion from council? Uh, Councilmember Brown.
Just a quick question. Thanks, Mayor. Um, the last line reads that the twenty-eight eight, um, is to be paid through the MEDC when the grant application is approved.
Correct.
Is there any reason to believe that the grant application will not be? And if it's not, then what does that mean for?
Then we would not go forward. Um, the grant application itself has not been submitted yet. It's being, going to be formulated. So, um, we're making every effort to make sure it gets approved.
Okay. So, in the event that it is not approved, are you saying that these funds won't have been, um, expended? So, we won't have to worry about not being reimbursed? The possibility of not being, recouping that twenty-eight thousand is my question?
Correct. There would not be a financial burden placed upon the city should the application not be approved.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Uh, are there any other, is there any discussion from council? Okay, seeing none, uh, I ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Agenda I, oh, look, agenda item C, um, Councilmember Spicer requested that there be a discussion about, um, the condition of street signs. So, do you want to start off or who do you?
Well, I, basically, it's a, you know, pretty small matter, um, to us, I'm sure, but for, you know, individuals who don't live here, it's, it's a major deal. Um, but I was just wondering about the process and how, um, that works. Um, do, do people call in? Do city workers, I don't know how it works. I just know, I've noticed some signs that are, um, in, um, bad condition, and I just wonder what process was for that.
Essentially, uh, someone would have to submit, um, their request for servicing, but a lot, as you mentioned, a lot of the signs are, um, difficult to read. Um, we did have an initial conversation with the county because they do have some sign-making equipment. Um, so we're starting negotiations with them relative to how we can start to periodically, um, replace some of the signs at a minimum cost. We were also looking at to having like an overlay on the actual metal component, but it doesn't seem that our signs are, um, of the sufficient quality and depth, um, in order to qualify for those overlay-type signs. So, we are looking at some, some cost-effective options to start doing a replacement program.
Jim Leonardson, Director of Public Services. Um, what I will do is give you kind of an update. As of today's date, um, we have identified sixty-two street signs, street name signs in town that we feel at this point need to be replaced. Um, forty of those have been ordered. Uh, the other twenty-two will be, uh, and we will continue in our quest to identify more. So, I guess I would ask the public that if you have a street sign that is near your home, that if you would be kind enough to report that to City Hall and let us know, or you can call the street department and we'll add it to the list and see what we can do.
So, the question I have, that's good to hear. Um, I know, like, you know, for example, there's some streets where they have like the very old, kind of like ornament, it, you know, it has the little, um, arch thing at the top of it. So, those are very old. Yeah, some of them are kind of like the new, kind of green. They're all green, but like, they're a little bit larger. Um, and then, but in terms of the posts, are they gonna be like the, um, silverish posts with the kind of, it does this?
All right. We will try to replace what is currently there. Obviously, we're trying to harmonize the signage in town so everything looks right.
Okay.
Um, and we will do our best to do that. Given the confinement of the mounting apparatus, the pole in the top, as you say, we'll do the best we can to make everything match and look good, so.
Councilmember Spicer.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Jim, I want to thank you because I was just going to ask about the, um, if, if you were looking at the poles as well for replacement, because I did see some rusted poles and I don't, um, that hold some signs, and I'm not sure how, if that's just gonna be painted, the rust.
I don't know as we will paint that. I can tell you that we have had volunteer groups in the past address some of those things, and maybe that's something we can look at again for this summer. Um, I know Councilman French had a group that addressed that last summer, the summer before.
Two summers ago, yeah.
And actually get quite a few of them done. But, uh, so maybe we could move forward in that direction again.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember French.
Thank you. Um, so not wanting to be a fly in the sign ointment, as it were, but as was stated before, we have an awful lot of historical signs, and we are in an historic city. So, the question is, are we going to be in violation of our street signs? Do they fall under the historic places? I'm thinking of the street signs in the downtown. Um, do we have to be in terms of whatever the historical association is, do they have to be the ones that have that nice, you know, the ones that are cast iron, that are stamped, you know, filigree at the top, et cetera?
That I do not know, um, but I will research it and make certain that we fall within where we need to be. Um, along with that, I'm sure that MDOT has certain standards on their roads as well, so we will make sure that that's all addressed.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions from council?
Mayor and council, if I could offer.
Thank you.
We already have a wayfinding committee in place, um, although they're looking at regards to signage around, along the major corridors. Um, but we can, I can expand their, but they're focused on, um, to include looking at the signage as well in general, and especially in regards to, um, historic signage, if there's any requirements that we would have to meet for that. Hopefully, funding is what it is.
Okay.
We could sell the antique ones.
Are there any other, are there any other, uh, Councilmember Spicer?
Quick comment, Mayor. I don't want to call out specifics, but I did notice, and Jim did mention that there were eighty-two identified signs that were going to be looked at or replaced or updated or, but I, I did notice in precinct one that there's signage in the street area, the Broadway, very bad. So, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, okay. Item D, uh, discussion council rules of procedure. I know, um, Jill sent the corrections out. Were there any major concerns? Councilor French.
I'll, I'll take ownership of this. Um, since our last meeting, uh, I have been extremely busy. I, I sent a, a copy to Councilwoman Brown. She's extremely busy. We've not actually met yet, um, and, and that's on me. Um, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. So, it was my understanding that we were tasked with, with sort of meeting and sort of drafting.
Well, what, Councilmember Brown.
Well, okay, yeah, we, you're, you're right. We have not been able to meet. At the last meeting, though, um, I did ask that we put this on the agenda because, and it was during that time that you and I both volunteered to be on a subcommittee, I think, um, Mayor, were you gonna do that?
Well, yeah, I was, I was gonna ask the council. My understanding of the last meeting was, um, the council have a chance to look at the revisions that, that we had worked out during the work session with, um, Mrs. Seaworth, and, you know, if you had any of those, to report them back. Uh, but then what my suggestion was to, to expedite the whole procedure was just to set like a three-person meeting of council, charge them with, you know, doing, if there's any other kind of heavy lifting, and then reporting it back to council. And I, and, and I know Councilmember French and Councilmember, uh, Brown expressed interest, and then I'm, I'm definitely interested. So, I was gonna ask council, I don't know if we need to modify the agenda, um, if council would be okay just approving a little working group to get that done and bring it back. Um, but Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just, I'd like to add that we think about a deadline for this subcommittee to report back.
Yeah.
I just don't want us to let it fall in the cracks. I want us to keep the momentum going that we had at our, at our training, so.
Could we say, this is the second meeting of the month, so maybe the first meeting?
Second meeting in June, right?
I was gonna, I was gonna say the first.
What was that, Memorial Day?
Oh. Wait. The, no, the first, the first meeting in June. It'd be June. But, but she's right, it's Memorial Day. Um, or no, I'm saying the, the week, the weekend, but, excuse me, Councilmember Brown, go ahead.
I, I, thank you, Mayor. I, I'm not objecting to the first meeting in June. I'm just asking that we think about, there is a graduations and open houses, and there's Memorial Day coming up. Um, so I'm suggesting the second meeting in June, because we may have to meet more than once.
Oh, I hope.
The subcommittee.
Oh, I hope.
I hope not too, but it's possible. So, I, I'm either, I, I'm fine either way. I just want us to set a goal deadline is what I, what I would like to see happen.
Councilmember Lawler and Spicer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, this subcommittee is, what's wrong with what's written right here? So, I guess I'm not understanding why we have a subcommittee.
Uh, well, we don't have, my, my thought was to do that just because, um, there were some, there were some language that, um, I won't call it cocoa, but Ms. Seaworth had suggested we change that. Um, but because of the, the time constraints, there were some, um, other language that really wouldn't, I think would be, would, would not be controversial, but I wanted to include it because if we want, included in the work session packet, from we, when we did have the work, the work session was a, um, a, a copy of the rules of procedure from Port Huron that were actually very well put together. Um, and so they, even the formatting of the way it was formatted was helpful. Um, so really what I had in mind is just, uh, meaning to click down, sit down and, and agree on a formatting that mirrors that, and then bring it back to council, that with, with that, with minimal changes to what was happening, what, what was discussed at the, the work session. Because, you know, there were, there were some, um, things that we didn't get to cover, but, you know, let's say, um, one of the things that Huron had is they had a section on meetings. So, they described, you know, a regular meeting, special meeting, you know, work session, and those are kinds of things that, um, we do. I don't know how well they're addressed in our current meeting, uh, current, um, rules, but they should be there so that, you know, it's clear about like what happens at those various meetings. But, and, and the thought was to try to prevent us from having, you know, endless, um, I guess, work sessions based on the rules. Just like Councilmember Brown said, we want to wrap this up. Um, so, that, that was, that was my thinking, pretty much. It was to try to get it down quicker.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Spicer.
Um, um, I was, I thought, um, I was thinking that, um, the committee is, um, this, Councilman French and Brown, and yourself. Okay, that, um...
Well, it's, it's not, I'm, I'm asking, I'm suggesting account for council to approve.
Oh, oh, no, I, I was just saying, I don't know that we need to figure out a deadline. I mean, I think once you guys talk and you can, you can figure that out on a future date, so.
Oh, okay.
Just wanted to mention it. All right. That's my comment.
Um, can I?
I'm good.
Okay.
So, I guess, I'm sorry.
Councilmember French.
We, in order to, to make this meeting official, we have to modify our agenda. So, I would move that we would modify the agenda to allow for us to approve the creation of a subgroup of three to, uh, consolidate the rules, uh, that we have currently been operating on with some suggestions we've received from the consultant and our, through our council training from now, a month ago, um, along with council rules that we were exposed to at that training session from the city of Port Huron, that we would, we would, in that, that subgroup would then, after combine, reaching agreement on how we combine these four pieces of information, would bring that report to the council by the first meeting of June with at least a report on progress.
I support that motion.
That was beautiful. For motion. Um, so there's a motion to amend the agenda to do that. There's a second, uh, do a quick roll call vote to do that.
We don't need a roll call.
We have, we have to, well.
Councilmember Spicer.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Is there, is there a motion to approve, uh, the subcommittee made up of Councilmember French, myself, and Councilmember Brown?
I would make a motion that we, that the subgroup of three be consisting of myself, Councilman Brown, and Mayor Brown.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. Um, let's have a quick roll call.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes. Thank you. Um, agenda item E, request approval for assembl- assembly permit for Salem United Church of Christ rummage and bake sale in Crowell Park.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Uh, is there a representative? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Charles Savage, on behalf of Salem United Church. What the proposal is and the request is for the area behind the church there in the park to set up tables for a rummage sale. And part of that, which was not included in this, and it won't, uh, change it, is later we'll be coming back to you with another request because we will be showing some free movies in the park as well. So, we appreciate your consideration and your approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any, uh, discussion from council for questions? Okay. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, um, when is the rummage and bake sale scheduled?
The twentieth of May.
Okay, thank you.
It's coming set.
Thank you.
Eight o'clock until three.
Okay.
At Crowell Park?
That's what it's called.
The, the Water Tower Park.
I have a water tower.
Thank you.
Are you gonna have cinnamon rolls?
Maybe.
Yeah. Um, all those, we'll have a, a, a roll call vote for that. There's no other discussion.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Uh, Agenda Item F, request approval to open City Hall at eight thirty AM on Wednesday, May seventeenth, twenty seventeen, for employee appreciation breakfast hosted by First Baptist Church and Homestead Bank.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded it.
Sure. Well, I see Scott Evans is here in the audience, but, um, we're very thrilled that, um, and the pastor. But, uh, we received a very kind and generous invitation, um, from First Baptist Church as well as Homestead Bank to show their appreciation to all of our employees, and that's scheduled for this Wednesday, um, from seven thirty AM to eight thirty AM at the, um, Leddington Center. So, in order for, um, most of our employees to be able to attend, uh, we are asking that City Hall, um, postpone the opening of City Hall for a half hour, so until eight thirty, so that they can, um, participate in the celebration.
Are there any comments, questions from council? Councilmember Brown?
Will you be open thirty minutes later?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other comment, or did you have any?
Um, I guess that what we would just want to say is this is a part of, um, First Baptist Church program called Love Your Community.
I just wanted to say that, um, First Baptist Church, um, this is a series of events that we'll be doing throughout Albion Community. Um, we have had, um, a breakfast for Harrington teachers last week, there's some painting projects, but, um, it's about engaging people, and we're very excited to be able to do this for city employees. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay, if there are no other, uh, questions from council, uh, this, does this a voice vote, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, Agenda Item G, request approval of temporary signs for downtown businesses.
So moved.
Is a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded it?
Basically, we wanted to get a consensus from council relative to allowing some of the local businesses, especially in and around the downtown area, to have some, um, signs placed to help direct people to both their businesses, um, from the rear as well as the parking. Um, and sometimes those might be in places where we don't normally permit signs, so as we're asking to be able to proceed with establishing a variance process so that they, they could help identify where their businesses and parking are going to be located.
I noticed one of the, uh, longstanding establishments has put one up there, you know, right, you know, where the skating rink used to be, by the train, the railroad, um, line there. So, is there any, like, uh, requirements relative to size, about?
We were going to work out those details, but we thought we would first get, um, approval from you to go forward before we started working out the specifications, um, we have to redo our sign ordinances altogether. But during this construction period, it seemed reasonable to allow for some local businesses to be able to identify, help identi- patrons identify where they're located.
Councilmember French?
I would approve this with, um, an interesting possibility. What if we actually had a sign contest? Make it as big and gaudy as you want, as long as it doesn't shine light, it's not lit, right, it's just a painted sign, um, to just sort of decorate the downtown, so that as we look at the, the construction, we actually see something that might be kinda cool for a while. Just a suggestion.
As long as you're in charge of that committee.
Hey, I will be the despotic ruler of all decisions.
Uh, Attorney Hartness?
Well, well, I, I think that Councilman French's idea would be a good thing for the community, I can foresee a host of, of legal issues that would stem from it. Um, so, do that, and preemptively cut them off. I guess, well, I guess my suggestion would be at least for, for purposes of, of temporary signs that the council do something along the lines of, given that it's a temporary situation, limited to a certain number of signs of certain size, maybe like sandwich board, like, I mean, we can throw some arbitrary numbers on it, but, um, you know, I, I think maybe just keep everybody somewhat uniform.
I would draw my request.
I support it.
Um, so, I, I think, I'm not, Councilmember Lawler?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, and, um, Dr. Mitchell, help me out with this if I'm saying anything incorrect, but, um, at a, um, former DDA board meeting, we had, um, we talked about having signs in the, to, um, let people know where the businesses were from, by, from, um, Clinton Street. Um, so, um, the request, nobody really took a hold of it, but, um, I'm happy to see that, um, the merchants downtown really want this. Um, is this something that could be brought back to the DDA, or is this something that, um, we're asking the council to provide? Because I know the DDA, I don't know how much funds that they have to work with, but, um, if we're talking about doing these signs for the downtown area, um, could, um, our, um, chair be included in the decision of the signs that are, we're gonna display, or who takes on that responsibility?
So, the, the one, what, what I'm hearing is there's two, there's two things. One is allowing the business owners to have their own signs, right, that's one. And the other thing is what you're saying, which is another thing, is the DDA kind of with wayfinding, um, and the status of that, right? So what, what do we know the status of?
Well, I think as you all know, the DDA has very limited funding. So what we were able to negotiate with MDOT as part of the project, they did put up some signs to direct people to, um, the downtown businesses, I think it's more generic, as well as the downtown parking on both sides of Superior Street. So those are in place. Um, I, I can approach the DDA, but I, it would have to be a very nominal cost. Um, but the, the request that was before you was relative to the businesses themselves, if they are interested in putting up signs, because they're starting to, um, so that we could have, to look consistent. And if John Tracy could provide some additional information.
John Tracy, Director of Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement. Uh, yeah, unfortunately, the downtown, uh, with Superior Street closed up, does undoubtedly make, uh, a hardship for a lot of the businesses. Um, I would suggest that they be, um, limited, of course, to how big, and definitely how many, and, um, make sure that we don't create a problem where we have any type of hazard traffic, traffic hazards caused by the signs for pulling in and out of the, the parking lots. Uh, where I would observe these mostly being, or suggest would be on, of course, Clinton Street and possibly, uh, behind, on Marketplace, behind the businesses on the east side of Superior Street. Um, of course, we would not be able to put any of these out on any MDOT streets such as Superior, or Austin, or Erie, and things of that, that nature there, but at least give the businesses some chance to have some additional, additional, uh, advertising without creating a, a hazard.
Any questions? Any questions from council? Okay, thank you. Um, the vote, seeing no other comments, ask for a voice vote in favor. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. City manager report?
Thank you. Well, Mayor and council, um, if you haven't noticed, there is, um, street construction going on on Superior Street. And, um, between old maps and old water mains, there are occasional water conditions created. Um, I do want to thank all of our employees who have been extremely responsive, um, to these situations when they do occur, and helping to notify all of the businesses, um, that are impacted. Um, there is a scheduled shut off this week, and if I could ask Jim Linderson to come up and speak to that for just a moment.
What we are looking at, um, Wednesday, the seventeenth, is a scheduled shutdown of a portion of the downtown area. Um, as near as I can tell, in consulting with staff, we are looking at East Erie Street from Linden West to Superior Street. Um, from Erie Street south on Superior, all the way down to River Street. That's the area at this point that we feel that will be shut down for a matter of time. Um, what they're going to do basically is insert a couple of valves, uh, in the water system so that if we have any further future incidents, um, that we're able to isolate a smaller area a lot quicker. Obviously, some of the valves we have are as old as the piping below them, which is pre nineteen forty, so they don't always operate as they should. So, that's what we're looking at. Now, I guess the caveat to that is because of the fact that we are gonna depressurize the system basically down to zero, open it up and install some new valves, um, over an extended period of time, one day, basically, one work day, um, we're also gonna have to issue a boil water order. Uh, I've taken care of that paperwork, I've had it already, uh, okayed by the DEQ. That will be disseminated tomorrow, um, along with, and actually, uh, we did have some notices go out today to residents, as well as some of the businesses. A lot of them weren't open, open when they were delivering them, and they got busy. We had another issue, water issue downtown again today, so, um, which was in preparation for Wednesday's event. So, um, what'll end up happening then with the boil water, uh, order, is that, uh, once things are back up in place, we'll flush the system really well. Um, and we have to take bacterial samples and make certain that we don't have any contamination within our water system. Uh, once we take two rounds of those, which we're hoping to do Thursday morning and Friday morning, they have to be twenty-four hours apart, once both of those are cleared, we'll put the system back in service, and, uh, if everything goes well, I will reissue a recined boil water, um, Monday morning. So, that's kinda where we're at. Um, is there any questions at all?
Councilmember Spicer?
Just, so I'm clear, the areas you just mentioned are gonna be shut down from Wednesday until?
The shut off, but we will shut, as I say, is from Erie, it's on Superior Street, from Erie to River Street. And then Erie itself, from Superior to Linden Avenue, it's basically a couple of strips.
Time frame is all day, or?
I'm sorry?
The time frame?
All day.
Uh, all day. Depends, we're hoping to get it back up in service quicker if we can. Um, it depends on how long it takes them to get those valves in and everything hooked backed up, so.
Residents just, in that area, just should expect to be without water all day?
I think we've got it scheduled off from seven AM to five PM, as I recall, so. And hopefully, as I say, things go well, and it'll be less time than that. Um, the boil water will still, still be in place until we have clearance on our bacterial sampling. So, and hopefully, by Saturday, we'll know.
So, does that affect the?
Which basically means that can't drink or cook with the water, you can bathe in it, but do not cook or drink with it, with it. So, um, those will be, as I say, disseminated tomorrow, that boil water, uh, order, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then if I might continue, um, on June twenty-eighth, we are planning a community visioning celebration at the Albion Fire Station. It'll be an opportunity to share, um, some of the plans and projects that are going on with the city, as well as get, um, input from residents on what they would like to see, especially in regards to housing and zoning, what they think, um, Albion should look like forward. Danielle, what is the time for that again? Thank you. And I, um, was able to attend a retirement party for Paul McCowsky, um, he was the Environmental Health Officer for Calhoun County after over thirty years of service. Um, so he's moved on to having fun, he'll be, um, contracting with them for a period of time to help with the transition. Also, last week, um, Mr. Bonner had a, a meeting with a group of individuals, including Representative Bayzon and prosecuting attorney Dave Gilbert, um, who were there to talk about the marijuana laws and what are the implications for law enforcement, in particular in communities, um, especially in Calhoun County. And we had the first of the three 5K races, and the first one was Run the Rock, and both chief, Scott Kip and Stacy Levin, both participated in the run, and we're looking forward to the next run. I forgot if it's June or July, but it's coming up, and we hope to have a lot more people participate, especially city employees, who'll be a part of the city hauler team if you run, or the city crawler if you walk. So, uh, those are going on. The Calhoun County Lead Task Force is planning, um, a series of public information events, as well as, um, some lead testing for children, zero to six, um, and they're going to be meeting with the Healthy Baby Committee to see if they could possibly even coordinate with the functions that they put on. And as you are aware, Granger has mailed out a communication to, um, all of the customers to let them know that if they choose to have, um, invoices without specific wording, that they could just merely contact them to have that removed. Uh, Miracor Vista, they were winding up this first year of the program, it's been exceptionally beneficial to us as a city, and we're starting the interviews for the upcoming year applicants. The city of Albion is anticipating having two positions, one focused on planning and the GIS system, and the other one relative to neighborhood stabilization, and we hope to get started with having, um, neighborhood planning councils in designated areas. The, um, auditors are finalizing their audit report, um, so we'll be coming to you probably in the month of June. And, let's see, the Albion Building Authority has rescheduled, has scheduled their next meeting on June eighth at Maple Grove, which is my birthday, June eighth. And, let's see, there's a number of events, including the Resilient Communities. Um, this has really been, um, a, a great series of events and some great conversations, so I encourage people to participate. Um, there's a screening tomorrow, um, a book study on Thursday at the library, another community conversation on Thursday, June first, and all of the events are free. Um, I did participate this weekend with the tour of the African American Museum, and that was, um, it's always enlightening to be there and to learn more about, um, our history. And as it was mentioned, the employee appreciation is going to be this Wednesday, so City Hall will be opening a half hour late at eight thirty on that day. And thank you again to the Leddington Center and, for making that available for that space, and the First Baptist Church in Homestead for hosting the event. Um, I think you received today a notice in regards to the Fair Breakfast, and this one is going to be honoring mothers, that'll be on Saturday, May twentieth, at Albion College at Upper Baldwin, there is a cost for attending that. And the Warren Treaty video, which many of you participated in, I understand the premiere is going to be Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, at the Baum Theater. And the wonderful Albion's Farmers Market is reopened, right now it's on Saturdays, from nine AM to one PL, P, M, at Stafford Plaza. They have hired the new market master, um, Laura Overholt, and you may know her as the one who makes the triple, triple chocolate cookies that Louis loves, along with some, some other. that Louis loves, along with some, some other things. So we're really excited to have her on board. They will resume the Wednesday, early afternoon, evening sessions as well, I believe, in June. And then on June tenth, will be the French Market from ten AM to three PM, and they are accepting applications for vendors for that event, including food products as well as crafts. And the contact person for that is Stacy. And that concludes my report.
Sure. Thank you. Future agenda items. Are there any future agenda items this evening?
I would like.
Councilmember Reed?
The two things, Juneteenth and, uh...
Holland Park.
Holland Park.
Okay. So for presentation items, Juneteenth and Holland Park. Councilmember Brown?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This doesn't have to be the next meeting, but definitely somewhere in the near future, I'm encouraging council to be proactive in looking at how the possibility of Crowell School closing will impact the polling location for precincts one and five. So I'd like to see that be a discussion or
Okay.
sometime, something in the, in the future.
Thank you. Um, are there any other future agenda items? Okay, seeing that, we'll move forward. Motion to excuse council member, absent council members. Is there a motion to do that? Yes, we did.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Public comments. Citizens addressing, since I say citizens, public addressing the council. If you would limit your comments to no more than three minutes, and we asked for proper decorum. Is there, are there any public comments this evening?
Mike Bearman, one one oh one, six twenty-nine, Mall Road. I have to commend you tonight for having such a tremendous group of people here that you honored, because if we're not out honoring the people around us that are doing great things, then shame on all of us. I thought you did a very, very nice job with that tonight, and that. Also, I would like to remind you that Older Michander's Day is Wednesday at the State Capitol, and there are still a few spots on the bus. You need to get ahold of the Senior Center, the Fork Senior Center, to find out how to catch the bus, so. Hope to see you there.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments this evening? Okay. Seeing that, I'm going to do something, go off script. Danielle, congratulations. I, I went to the reception before commencement. I didn't stay the whole program, but I saw the book and just kind of leafing through it and saw you in there, and I put your business out, summa cum laude, Phi Beta Kappa, which is excellent.
Congrats.
Are there any other, seeing no other public comments, we're going to move to the end of the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Good evening.